Oh, yeah.
Well, no. We're just talking. Um. We're just talking. Yeah. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? In the question. Yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise. Which was. Sure. But. Okay. What's your future? Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. Stay here. Tell us how you feel. Yeah. Do you have a word? What's last? I said, yeah. I had a raise.[595.11]
Somebody who would might be on suicide watch. This is a cell in our infirmary. Our infirmary was designed to care for inmates who have medical needs. Instead, probably eighty-five to ninety percent of the people who are placed in the infirmary are either going through detox protocols from alcohol and various drugs, or they are on suicide watch. As you can see, it's dark. There's no color, there's no connection to the outside world. It is not a therapeutic environment. It's not where you hope to place somebody who's contemplating ending their life and trying to work with them in a way that gets them to see that there's a brighter future for them. The second photo is the medical infirmary dayroom. It's smaller. It was, like I said, it was built for the delivery of medical care, not mental health care. And finally, the last photo is actually of our, what we would term our maximum security housing unit. And that is unfortunately, if we have people who are severely mentally ill, but maybe they're not suicidal, they might be in there. They're dangerous. We haven't been able to stabilize their symptoms yet. They are, there's a mixture of people in that housing unit that are there because they are truly dangerous people, people who've committed multiple murders. And they're mixed in with our folks who haven't committed a serious crime, but they are also dangerous at the moment because they're psychotic and we haven't successfully gotten their symptoms under control. Far from ideal. You can see also that, you know, as I said, our mental health staff do a wonderful job and people amazingly do get better while they're in our custody. But they, like I said, they are going to be talking, and these two units, they are often going to be talking to their clients through the door. You probably, I happen to be a mental health professional as well, and I can tell you this is probably the exact opposite of what you would design. Some data about what happens to people when they come to jail when they have a mental illness. And we're going to use the acronym SMI for Serious Mental Illness. We actually are a little better than the national average. The national average people with a serious mental illness typically stay in jail about four times as long as somebody who, without a serious mental illness, even though they committed a similar offense. Oftentimes, they're not competent to plead guilty at their initial court appearance, and maybe they could have gotten out in three days, but because they weren't competent to do that, they end up with us for weeks and often months. And you can see, though, on average, we are, it is more than twice the length of stay for somebody who has a serious mental illness compared to those who don't. This is the percentage of people being booked in with a serious mental illness. And you can see, we run typically, you know, right around the low twenties in terms of a percent of people who, all of our bookings, people that have a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, and other psychotic disorders, that, you know, we have a lot more people that come to jail with lesser severe disorders, depression and anxiety and things that we can help them manage. But we have a lot of people, this adds up to a lot of folks who are booked into our jail who have very serious and persistent mental health conditions. So, to put numbers to that graph, about forty-three percent of our population in recent months has had a mental health diagnosis, serious or not serious. About twenty-five percent of them have had a serious mental health diagnosis. So during the two years prior to the pandemic, because, and I shared, I break this data down because everybody's data changed dramatically when COVID hit. Sherry's data changed, my data changed. So I wanted to give you, I can't predict how much we're going to regress back to how things work, but I wanted to give you the ranges of both. So, we averaged in the two years prior to the pandemic, just a shade under twenty thousand bookings. Twenty thousand Douglas County citizens, well, maybe they were all Douglas County citizens, but most of them were booked into our jail. Eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four had some type of mental illness diagnosis. And nearly five thousand had serious mental illness. But that's on an annual basis. Those are the numbers that we're talking about. We typically have a census on an average daily population, though it has been down thankfully a little bit this year. But I'll say around twelve hundred is a good estimate of a historical average. And you take twenty-five percent of that, we have, you know, three hundred people with a serious mental illness under our roof at any given time. You can see during the most recent two years, as I told you, the data was different. The number of total bookings declined, as did slightly those with mental illness, which declined correspond. And Sherry and I are going to kind of tag team on a couple of these next ones.
As you can see, from the information with individuals being booked into jail with serious mental health issues, some of the things that the county has chosen to do is develop programs in collaboration between the Community Mental Health Center and the Department of Corrections to try and help these individuals to the best of our ability. The first program was developed in two thousand and six, and that program is Mental Health Diversion. We have served to date six hundred and eighty individuals in that program. That program initially was established with the Board of Mental Health and the Community Mental Health Center and Corrections coming together and looking at what is going to help individuals hopefully get out of jail quicker, provide them with intensive case management, and reduce recidivism. The program has been very successful, and we have expanded it twice. We then developed in two thousand and ten the Intensive Case Management Program for incarcerated transitional age youth. This program was developed when the state came to the Community Mental Health Center and said, "We would really like you to develop this program and provide intensive case management to a specific age group, nineteen years to twenty-four years of age, and look at the data and see if we can help reduce recidivism." This program transitioned to a Region Six funded program called Emergency Community Support in two thousand and nineteen. To date, we have served seven hundred and fifty-six individuals within that program. In two thousand and thirteen, Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, in collaboration with Douglas County Corrections, engaged in an educational program, both for individuals in jail and in the reentry program. We provide a specific curriculum that is designed to help reduce recidivism and increase individual skills while they're in corrections, while they're incarcerated. To date, we've served six hundred and ten individuals. In two thousand and fifteen, we were awarded a Second Chance Act grant to provide an intensive outpatient program, and that is a therapy-based group and individual counseling for individuals that are incarcerated that also have a substance use disorder. And to date, we have served five hundred and fifty-one individuals in that program. In two thousand and fifteen, Douglas County, we joined the Stepping Up Initiative. And that initiative really focuses on reduction of recidivism for individuals who experience serious mental health issues in corrections. In two thousand and seventeen, we saw another unmet need, and that was individuals in corrections that really needed chemical dependency evaluations in an expedited manner so they could get out of corrections and get into treatment services. So, we hired a chemical dependency evaluation specialist, and we have completed seven hundred and four evaluations since we started that program. In two thousand and eighteen, we received a NACO Achievement Award for the services that are provided. In two thousand and nineteen, we received, Douglas County, received the designation of a Stepping Up Innovator County. That really focuses on the fact that we are doing things in collaboration with corrections that are very innovative, that are a step above other counties. We're really trying to reach people in innovative ways. So that's, I really think that's important for individuals to know that Douglas County has really taken this on as a passion. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, we will initiate a second intensive outpatient program through another grant that we received together in our collaborative efforts to do intensive outpatient services in jail proper. Lots of fun.
Absolutely. So, these programs benefit the jail. More importantly, they benefit the people who happen to come into our custody in a variety of ways. Not only do they oftentimes get out of jail more quickly and into a more appropriate environment, the recidivism rates have been impacted. When we get people engaged in ongoing case management, ongoing medication management, connection to services in the community, they get better, they come back to the jail less often. That reduces the burden on law enforcement, on our emergency rooms, on our homeless shelters, and ultimately, on our taxpayers as well. So, I want to talk a little bit more about the overlap of who Sherry serves and who comes into our facility. And again, I broke this down between pandemic and pre-pandemic data. During, and the most recent data I have available ends a year ago, a little over a year ago, we average about forty-two admissions a month from people who were, who have been recent Community Mental Health Center clients. Going back to pre-pandemic, that was about seventy-five a month. Or more than, nearly, you know, about two and a half people a day. So we, we are serving the same people. We have served, we've recognized that a long time ago. It is, I think, in part, that's evidence why, by the fact that, I would like to think it was in the county commissioner's infinite wisdom, but they hired a mental health professional as their director of corrections. Because we knew that, and recognized the fact that this is such an issue that has, the community has not successfully dealt with outside of the walls, that we had to respond and develop collaborations that hopefully work from the inside out and keep people out to a greater extent than they would if we didn't.
So, when looking at research in regard to how behavioral health services work with individuals who have been incarcerated, one of the most important factors is called in-reach. In-reach is where individuals go, behavioral health individuals go into the jail, and they connect with individuals that are incarcerated while they're in corrections. And then continue to work with those same individuals when they leave corrections. All the research indicates that that reduces recidivism. With our populations being very similar, and we see the same individuals between the Community Mental Health Center and Department of Corrections quite frequently, one of the things that we piloted was a Familiar Faces Project. The Familiar Faces Project really focused on those individuals who had been incarcerated over and over and over again. These were not easy circumstances that our group took on to look at. The familiar face comes to, not the incarcerated person being the familiar face, but the staff person that was working with them, providing them consistent intensive case management. So every time that person was incarcerated, that same staff member met them. That same staff member went to them. That staff member was the one consistent person in that individual's life, and it was imperative. Those staff members that do this work, it is not easy, and they will tell you so. They've advocated for medication changes. They have helped individuals get to appointments when they leave corrections. They have helped people find housing, jobs, reconnect with family members. That's some of the work that we do together. This project was a twelve-month pilot, and we had a team of individuals that met twice a month to specifically go over eight individuals that we were providing intensive case management to. Most people would say eight individuals. That is not very many individuals. But when we looked at the number of incarcerated days and the cost to Douglas County for those eight individuals prior to participating in this pilot, it was a little around a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. After participating, it went down to about fifty-four thousand dollars. That is a significant impact on financial resources from the county. But what's most important in regard to that financial impact is really the impact that it made on the individual's lives. It is absolutely great that we helped save, possibly save county taxpayer dollars, but what I think is better is the fact that we helped people have better lives. That is really what matters to me, and that's why Mike and I work together so often in regard to the clients that we work with. Is how can we help the citizens of Douglas County that are incarcerated, that have mental health and substance use issues, have a better quality of life? I think that's what we all want, when it comes down to it, at the end of the day. I think that's what we all want.
To me, the Familiar Faces Project is, the results and the outcomes that they had, you know, it's really special. It is something that provides stability to people that have had a lifetime of instability. You may have seen some of these folks, you know, on the streets downtown, chronically mentally ill. Those are the folks that we're targeting, the people that are coming in and out of our jail literally dozens of times, and they have to be eligible to participate in this. It was four, at least four incarceration within the previous twelve months. Many of them had several more than that. It is the true revolving door, and it's really important as we're talking about developing new programs and resources, we also must consider the cost of the status quo. How much money do we spend to keep people homeless, to keep people chronically mentally ill, when we could do something different? One of the options that we proposed in Phase One of the study was a collaborative space. For the moment, we can refer to it as the Douglas County Community Resources Center. And this could be a space where, I've spoken to a few other county department heads about if they would not increase their staff, but would they take some of their existing staff and place them? If a place like this existed where they could serve the county's most vulnerable citizens, would they be willing to take one of their staff from their existing locations and place it there? And the answer was yes, to everybody who Sherry and I spoke to. So the county government departments, such as the General Assistance, which provides financial support, a variety of other support as well, Veteran Services, and the Douglas County Health Department. Other agencies, you know, both public and private, we have other, you know, deep partnerships with state probation. One of the things we didn't mention on the Familiar Faces Project is actually law enforcement is involved. So getting those, you know, getting the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department involved. And the reason that that matters is, we developed a code so that when a law enforcement encounters somebody who's acting erratically, suffering a crisis, they can see this code to say, "Okay, this person's unfamiliar faces for the project." And they have another avenue to go down rather than just booking them into jail. And our nonprofit partners. We can't do everything as the county, obviously. There are a lot of wonderful agencies in town that provide a variety of services. It's not, we can't be a one-size-fits-all. So this would be a space where people could sit around a table and take our most difficult, challenging cases, and everybody has a little piece of the puzzle to develop a comprehensive plan that hopefully will bring about the best possible outcome for that person. In a space like that, you know, we could, we would be providing mental health, addiction treatment, medical care, housing needs would be addressed, case management, you know, nutrition services, vocational assistance. And like I said, there's a plethora of services that are provided by very good agencies in our community that we could avail ourselves of.
Thanks, Mike and Sherry. Working with Mike and Sherry and their staff for six months, I hope you see what I've seen, you've got very, very passionate professionals working on the mental health issues that the county has. So where do we go from here? The goal is to have improved spaces, so these spaces can support the care and effort that your Douglas County staff is doing for mental health patients, inmates. So there's a couple of directions that we looked at in Phase One, which we're going to try to consolidate into one direction in this study. Part of that process is this evening here, where we're trying to present some of the facts and challenges that we have, and then have some feedback on what are the thoughts of the community so that the county board can consolidate into a single direction. So one of the two directions was, what are the advantages and disadvantages of, let's see if I got this right here, of co-location? And so when we program this facility, and I'm not going to get in, we don't have the time to really get into the mental health program, but the first section is the space program that we did to do, from the needs assessment, what spaces do we need if we combine community mental health with corrections mental health? When we came up with a facility of about sixty-eight thousand three hundred gross square feet, that assumed that we were going to build on a piece of land somewhere else. We're going to build a brand-new facility, it's not going to be attached to anything, it's not going to be supported by anything, it's just going to be some, just to get an idea how big that could be. My feeling is, it's not going to be that big. And the reason is, is because there are, the locations where this probably are going to happen are going to probably be at the Forty-second and Willworth Street and the Sixteenth and the Number Worth Street for the Corrections Department. We're either going to be building separate facilities in each one of those locations, or we're going to be building, combining locations in either one of those facilities. I think that's where it's headed. That's not fact, but that's kind of what discussions have been shared. So comparing the two is part of the study, and there isn't a solution. I do not have a solution, I don't have a preconceived idea. I think there's got to be a lot of discussion happening over the next three or four months. But we think the cost will be lower by having a combined facility. Think about having two food services, having two mechanical, electrical technology rooms, having, building maintenance, having those separated and duplicated. So having a new facility, two new facilities doing that, we would have to duplicate all that, and in a combined facility, we would have some efficiency so that, so the overall cost probably would be lower. The services and program sharing, I think Sherry and Mike talked about what they've been doing in the past and what they want to do in the future. So co-location allows for multiple joint-use spaces and staff efficiency. They would be within the same building. Mike has made the case, we can bring other community partners into this combined location. And again, exemplify quality of service and outcome at less cost might be in a single co-located facility. What's the problem with that? Well, there's been a lot of pushback from some people that say, you know, having a Department of Corrections mental health facility with a community mental health facility in the same building is going to send the right message. You're going to have a mental health patient from the community getting in and mixed with that. So that is, I think, the biggest challenge of having this co-located. Separate facilities. And again, we programmed two separate facilities on two separate sites. And again, I don't think it's going to be this big. Because I think, again, it's going to be located and sharing some of the infrastructure that's at one of these facilities. Currently, Mike has a kitchen. Sherry uses the kitchen and the food service area. So if these facilities are located on one of those sites, or co-located on one of those sites, you potentially could have a kitchen already in place. You could have building maintenance personnel there, et cetera. So if it's located, the square footage size of having separate buildings, I think is going to be significantly less than the eighty-three thousand two hundred for combined facilities. There's potentially increased construction and operational costs of building two facilities instead of a co-located facility. And then the public perception, keeping adjudicated mental health inmates separate from community mental health patients eliminates the negative stigma. So that's a plus for having separate location. And again, what I've been saying is, if sites are located near existing county facilities, the space sizes and staffing requirements may be greatly reduced, whether it's a separate location or whether it's a co-located location. So, what are we trying to get to? What we're trying to get to is a much better space or spaces for mental health that can allow for mental health care to be appropriate with the current commitment of the staff. And new spaces, whether it's a separate or whether it's co-located facilities, the goal is to have operational efficiency. When Sherry was showing the pictures of her long hallway, she's got this hallway that goes on forever, the connections between staff is very inefficient, security is compromised. Having an efficient layout within so that staff can get to different components within the facility is very important. Clinical excellence, creating a positive healing environment. You don't have that now, at all, probably the opposite of that. And so clinical excellence based upon the facility design is the goal. And then the care experience, I think Sherry and Mike have been talking about, a continuum of care. So it's not just bringing an individual into the facility and having them treated and kicking them out the door. It's stepping them down into the ability to get into the community without just having kicking them out the door after treatment. So, in the facility, again, whether it's co-located or separate, I think one of the goals that we've all talked about in our programming effort is to have a non-institutional design. So that, you know, it doesn't look like a forbidding, you know, multi-story building that is going to have separate components. Basically, we want to try to have a low-rise construction, a connection to nature, a bright open space. So again, is this how the facility is going to look? No, but it's got a lot of the components in it that we'd like to achieve. At the end of the study, we hope to have a location, and we hope to have a view of how it would look, both inside and outside. Best practice mental health facilities, they look a lot different than the spaces that you have. The living rooms, intake assessment, the patient room, if you remember looking at Mike's, or even Sherry's sleeping rooms with her patients, they're done completely different nowadays. Today's facilities still have their boundaries, but more than ever, they are less places of confinement and more places of treatment and preparation for the return to the outside world in the continuum of care. So, in conclusion, neither of the facilities that handle mental health inmates and mental health patients were designed to provide mental health services. They were retrofitted, particularly in Sherry's, it was retrofitted. Mike's putting them in place, it's never designed for the hospital. They negatively affect Douglas County's caring staff efforts regarding mental health treatment. Collaboration between the two departments to ultimately reduce overall costs and increase efficiency is a real possibility. Co-location in a combined facility compared to developing two separate facilities requires careful consideration of all the factors involved. We don't have the answer and the solution. That's what this study is about, and that's what your inputs start off. It is the essential question to be resolved during the course of this study. Whatever the final solution entails, current best practice facility design is critical to the project's successful outcome. Thank you for listening to us all. And Mary Ann, I don't know if you want to introduce the discussion here?
Again, thank you, the three of you, for the presentation of what we're looking at tonight. And so, again, as I said earlier, we're going to start the community input.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
We have another mic, yes.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Great, great. Okay, so, from the community perspective, does anyone want to start? And I'm going to go ahead and put a five-minute timer. I'll tell you when there's one minute, when you have one minute to go. And we'll see how we go getting around with everybody, because it's about ten to seven right now. So who wants to give us their comments first?
I would stand up, but I have some issues. I would stand up, but I have some issues.
Douglas County.
I saw you on TV. Actually, my sister and me, we had a meeting because we've been involved with mental health for quite some time, with our families and so forth. And I really pray for this, that you come and speak. I've been involved with people for like twenty-five years. And when I first started this journey as a mother, I thought, "Oh, I can fix it," you know, but we need, or we need help. And I said, when I first started, I was going to write a book, and the book was going to be named A Mother's Cry for Help, because there was no help at the time. And I'm still on this journey even. And I just really appreciate everyone knowing that mental health is out there. And it's not getting any better, it's getting worse. And especially with people who are incarcerated. And when I saw that on TV, it just melted my heart. And I'm like, "Yeah, I need to get this meeting because it's happening." And I just thank you all for knowing that in the community especially, we have a lot of this going on. And there's no one that we can talk to, we feel safe talking to. And we're constantly looking for someone to help, help us, you know. And I have spoken with people, and I want to give a shout out for the Omaha Police Department. Co-responders, they're very good. I've been involved with them, and they've been there to help. And like I said, Omaha Police Department, they have really, really stepped up and helped people. It's really important that we have them. The only thing, I have two things that I have to ask about is that when there's people that have mental health